Okay, on February twenty third two thousand or twenty twenty-two, I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting to order and acknowledge that the press and the public were duly notified in accordance with the state law. And with that, I think Douglas, I'll turn it over to you for the first item on the agenda.
You have your minutes first.
Oh, all right. Take a look at the minutes. Would I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So approve and submit it.
Make an emotion?
Yes.
Anybody second? Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Approved.
Approved. Did we, we acknowledge that the press was?
Yes, I did.
We did do that? Okay. This is on. So we have with us today StanTech, and just to kind of recap where we are, the Planning Commission has been working on updating the comprehensive plan. We talked at length about the transportation element of that plan. It's one of the seven elements we needed to work on. We acknowledged, the Planning Commission acknowledged that the existing comprehensive plan transportation element is very light. It's, it's maybe two pages, maybe two and a half pages. And the Planning Commission felt like, given the amount of attention and kind of the size of the issue that transportation is for the community, that we could, it would benefit the group to have some outside expertise help with identifying needs that we could be, that could be addressed in the comprehensive plan. StanTech came to us, talked to us, I guess at our last meeting, and we agreed in on kind of conceptually on a format. And this, and we've since come to an agreement and, and engaged them to handle this process for us. So to just kind of recap what that process will be, and you all haven't really been, had this explained to you yet, but the plan is for them to hold basically a workshop today. And, and it's going to be just a lot of information gathering for them. They will, I think they're going to have some data to give, some just points for discussion. The plan is, is that they will take that information from you all back, work on it, try to develop several alternatives, ideas, things to be considered, and then come back to you with kind of a list of suggestions, recommendations for further discussion. And hopefully that list will end up in a format that can be neatly incorporated into the city's comprehensive plan for future, for future guidance on transportation. All that to say, and I just want to kind of give some disclaimers here. We have not hired them to fix all of our problems at this point. It's going to be very high level, kind of brainstorming exercise. We also have had discussions, and we can talk about this kind of any level of detail that you all want to, but there is a separate effort underway that is, it's happening, it happens to be happening at the exact same time with the city, between the city and the DOT on re-stripping the connector. As you all know, the connector got re-striped. Since that's happened, the city has asked that the DOT reevaluate what happened there and look at other alternatives to the striping that's there now. So StanTech has been asked to basically ignore that issue specifically during this process. That's being, the city does have a separate traffic engineer that is working on our behalf in those discussions. So that's a separate project. Again, we can discuss it if, if you all want, if it would be helpful to this project, we could certainly talk about that. But it's, it is going to be a different, a different project also going on at the same time as your work is going on on the comprehensive plan.
For my clarification, so StanTech is looking at the connector in conjunction with the city for advice towards working with SCDOT or DOT has asked us?
No, StanTech with the connector issue. The city has, has the city and the DOT have mutually agreed on a consultant, I think out of Maryland, that's going to work on it. The, in addition to that traffic engineer, the city has hired a local firm to be our advocate in those discussions. We don't have a staff, traffic engineer. So that's Jennifer Beal will be working on our behalf in that effort. So while I think the connector certainly should be a consideration in the comprehensive plan, kind of recommendations and high level, when it comes to, you know, the details of what was done by the DOT with re-stripping recently, you know, that's going to be a separate discussion. Any questions about kind of what StanTech will do? It was also brought to my attention that the the invite, the calendar invite was for this meeting to take thirty minutes in its entirety. And you're not going to be that lucky. It's going to be longer than thirty minutes. We don't know how long, but.
I think we knew that. Okay.
The start time was important, but not the end time. So if, if there's no other questions for me, I'll, I'll turn it over to the StanTech group.
I'll briefly just introduce, my name is Rick Day. Stuart Day, Josh Mitchell, all of StanTech. So we're here to have a good conversation about some of the traffic and transportation issues. And we thought we might start off with the conversation just with some traffic statistics, if that's okay. They're going to winter appetites and be thinking about it. And then we'll kind of lead into a discussion about some of the concerns. Mostly this first, what we call workshop meeting is to get information back for you in terms of what are the concerns that we need to make sure we evaluate. So we will be asking you questions or we want to make sure we understand it from you. Point out things that we may already know about, but these are the things that we need to make sure we pay attention to. Fair enough. And then the next meeting we scheduled will be to come back and say, about this point here, two or three things that may work, let's talk about those. So today is more information gathering, as Douglas indicated. And then we will talk more in detail the next meeting about potential projects that we want to put in the conference plan. Fair enough? I'm guessing about an hour and a half. But I promise you I'll keep you a minute longer than it needs to be, but we will move it along as quick as we can. Fair enough?
Sounds good.
I'm going to ask Stuart to start off with some of the statistics. And again, this is a workshop format, so interrupt, stop, question, don't understand. And if we don't answer, we'll just tell you that. Fair enough?
Yep.
We'll keep going. Thank you, Stuart.
All right. So I believe Douglas sent out, this, this information is all in the packet. This is the previous comp plan, the transportation section. In that, I just wanted to point out this graph that showed the total inbound traffic by month of the year. This, this again went to twenty fourteen, and I'm, I'm assuming that these were DOT numbers. We did not prepare this, to my knowledge, so.
That's correct.
That's just in there. And then there were some goals on the third page of that. It talked about goals and implementation strategies to improve congestion of the roadways on the island, and that's sort of sub-strategies in there to discourage non-resident parking in traffic in residential neighborhoods, and then to improve accuracy of data collection related to traffic, sort of the big items. Then there was some data that we provided to Douglas in January that this is the twenty twenty-one data from SCDOT. And so first, just wanted to make you all aware of where this data came from. So you can, if you're curious and want to go look for it yourself, and you got free time this weekend, you want to dive through the data, I want to make sure you're aware of how I get it. And if you went to DOT's website, scdot.org, at the top of the page, popular, because everybody loves traffic. And then you can come down and there's traffic counts. On this page, there's traffic analysis, and this is just how to get to the county station. I promise when you go to it, it's relatively, it's just got popular, and then traffic counts. And then it loads this website, and as you zoom in, there's different points. The blue points are just the average daily traffic according to the DOT on the roadway. If you click on it or hover over it, it'll list it for the past three years. So they're saying that in twenty twenty, the traffic on the IOP connector was seventeen thousand five hundred vehicles a day. In two thousand nineteen, it was nineteen thousand. So I think twenty twenty, you know, we all know that that was a bit of an anomaly. They've got historical data too. The green, the green triangles are really a pretty cool data source. They are loops that are in the ground, and it counts every vehicle that goes over it every day that it's functioned. So if you click on that, you can click on the site dashboard, and then pulls up a lot of similar looking graphics to what we did. We did it for the entire year of twenty twenty-one and delved into it in different ways. But it pulls up, you've got over here the daily or the weekly counts, the weekends, and then the weekday traffic as they've broken it down. And then it's got a similar trend of annual data by year. So you can see there's been a slight growth over, over time, which surprised me a little bit because, you know, you're pretty well built out. But I think, you know, probably growth in the region, and then people wanting to come to the beach, I think that that's probably indicative of that growth, even though your land use hasn't grown. Then it's got the monthly comparisons by, by year for the past four years. It also has a breakdown in types of vehicles. So you can see about seventy-eight percent are passenger cars. And then it goes into heavy trucks and that type of thing, breaking down by each classification. And then I, it's also got the daily, daily volumes by time of day, which I thought was relatively interesting because what they're showing is Monday is the highest day of the week, which surprised me a little bit. But what we did was, if, I guess from that data, if I go back to this, as you click on the green triangle, you can also go to the site data. And it'll have a calendar that has every day that's green is days that they've collected data. And so if you said you wanted to go back to July fourth and see that, you can click on, you know, the daily volume, and it'll plot it. You can do it by five hour, five minute bins or an hour, whatever you want to see. So there's a lot of available data here for you to kind of dive through from a traffic standpoint. What we've done and what's in your package is tried to do it in ways that we thought would be relevant to you to save you some time. So we've got the twenty twenty-one year is the last full year of data from those counts. But January through December, and you can see, you know, the general average was about twenty thousand. I don't think it's surprising that, you know, summer months were, were sort of the peak of the year. And then the, the fall and winter up into the spring were sort of the lower years to, to come to the average. I think that that makes sense. Does anyone, anything surprising about that to anyone? Okay. So then going to the next one, we, we just kind of sliced it a little bit thinner by weeks. And then we assigned, you know, holidays that maybe would be traffic generators. So like Labor Day and Columbus Day, you see those kind of pick up on those weeks, probably because of those holidays. And again, this is, I think, about what I would expect. I think probably the last week of the year or, you know, Christmas, the week between Christmas and New Year's was higher, and that maybe was a little bit surprising to me. But generally, I thought this made sense as well. Any thoughts or questions on that?
So Stuart, just a, a question, I guess. Is it in, in traffic engineering world, would it be safe to assume that the resident traffic in, say, January, that January out here would represent kind of resident traffic? And the delta between January and July could be taken to be visitor traffic?
I think that's probably a fair assumption. There may be a few more, not just sort of day trips, if you will. I think with construction vehicles or landscape maintenance type things, maybe is, you know, the warmer months, they're going to be, be needing to do that maintenance more frequently. They're not necessarily just beach trips, but.
Plus perhaps service trips for people replenishing, you know, food stores and things like that that would go off shelves quicker during summer months. So it's, it's a family of types of trips.
But I'd say generally, that's, that's a fair kind of assumption.
Hope you could bar chart, if you could bar chart the type of vehicle on that, that would tell you something too.
Then the next, the next page, we tried to say, okay, how do these things compare? So the orange is sort of the summer, and these are by day of the week. Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, and so, so forth. Both the summer months are an orange, the average, the entire year is black. And then the winter months are sort of that gray part there. So I think Douglas, to your, to your point, that delta is probably, you know, mostly visitors the most part by day of the week. Then we have inbound and outbound traffic by, by time of day. You know, this is a normal weekday conditions. And then similarly, on inbound and outbound traffic during summer weekends. So you see sort of that inbound traffic really peaking between probably about nine o'clock and noon or so.
Quick question, going back to your other chart, Sunday's the first part?
The week starts with Monday or Sunday.
Starts with Sunday.
Oh, so it starts on Sundays. Okay.
I'll, I'll confirm that and make sure the documentation is labeled those.
Yeah.
Again, sort of the weekends, you see the inbound trips in the first half of the day, outbound trips back half of the day versus the weekdays were a little bit more balanced traffic throughout the day. And then as the average hourly traffic, again, the summer is an orange, the gray is just total average for Saturday and Sunday. And then the black line is Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So I think that that, you know, shows what we would probably all expect, that the summer weekends are a little bit higher than the rest of the year. That's, that's what I've got in your packet, but also just wanted to make sure that, you know, y'all were aware of this. And then I think the next thing we wanted to do is hear from y'all on, on what, what the issues are and just take notes. And here are the same issues or different?
First, first quick question. Obviously, this is, this is great data. How, how far back does this data go? Can I go back ten years and get the same data?
I believe it can go back to twenty twelve.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that's one of the issues on a lot of people's minds is what's changed? Because a lot of us are saying it's not like it used to be ten years ago. We have more traffic now. So you think we can go all the way back to twenty twelve and get similar charts and graphs and numbers?
So these charts, I mean, we can, we can definitely produce those. Let me see if I've got. We did not, not all of the same data, just because it's somewhat time intensive, but got a chart here. So this, I, I was curious sort of what the historical looked like going back to two thousand nineteen. This is just ADT, not every hour of the day. But these are the ADTs that, so this is twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, there's depth. But, but you can see there's a relative increase. The black line is sort of trend line. If you delete twenty twenty, it's got a little bit of a steeper incline. But this would be, you know, if we could assign this and figure out potential growth rate that you are experiencing. I think that's relatively easy.
And I can't read the bottom. My eyes are getting.
This is twenty, two thousand nine.
Nine, okay, got it.
And what's your scale on the left there, just to see?
This is zero to, this is fifteen thousand, this is twenty thousand.
Okay, so the rough delta is about, what, seventeen or eighteen, sixteen to nineteen?
Yeah, it's this sixteen, seven hundred, in two thousand nine, nineteen, three hundred.
Okay, so that's.
About three thousand cars.
Per day?
Per day. And annual traffic, daily traffic.
That surprise you at all?
No, not, doesn't surprise me. I mean, I think that, I'm, I'm guessing that trend line is going to just keep, keep rolling. I, I think if you ask the average person on the island, they would have expected to be bigger, right? And I think they would expect it to be much bigger than that, like double, you know?
Right, right. The thing I would comment on about that is a lot of times when you look at the IOP connector, it's chock full of cars during the main time. And there's nobody, no matter how much more, you just can't push anymore through.
Right.
So that's probably why it's kind of growing like that at a more modest rate, perhaps.
Yeah.
But traditionally in other urban areas, when that happens, it spreads out over a longer peak. Or it's a peak, at peak times, spread. So you fit more in because you have a higher, so it's, so what you do, you, you, I would surmise that you have basically reach capacity during those peak hours. And now that is spilling out on other, either before or after the peak hours, right? Is what's going on. But there's, there's only so much you can fit through. And it is, is a, you know, theoretical or practical capacity.
Well, I think you have rotational, you have people that come in and from, from nine till twelve. And then there's a whole other group, I think, that arrives at twelve till three, if you will. Stuart, real quick, I'm sorry, you were two thousand nine, average daily rate was sixteen thousand?
Sixteen thousand, seven hundred.
And the two thousand nineteen was what the next?
Nineteen, three hundred.
Nineteen, three hundred. Okay.
So I think one thing, Rick, about what you said, it's going to make it difficult, is we can't look at the striping issue. That's been declared that that's kind of a separate thing, but, you know, that does make a difference on the capacity of the connector. I mean, if, if there's a striping scheme that lends itself to more higher flows in an egress situation, get people off the island, then that's part of the conversation.
Or reversible or whatever.
Reversible lanes, yep. But so I think on that level, I know we kind of agree not to cloud the, muddy the waters here, but I think it's.
We, we can talk about it, but.
Part of the issue.
The recommendations will come from the other group, right? And we'll pass on whatever discussing out here to them for the benefit, if you want to bring it up.
But almost all of.
So just on Marty's point, that that project is supposed to analyze kind of two, three, four different options for the connector in terms of capacities and flows. So I think their work will be significantly more detailed than this work. So I, and I don't know exactly how that would get dovetailed into a recommendation. I mean, I think that, I think their work will probably be kind of close to done and maybe lend itself to, you know, tailoring in the comprehensive plan to that work.
Douglas says.
Theirs will be much more detailed than what StanTech's doing. It should be kind of ahead of it in priorities, so.
Sure, sure.
That study, I think that study's going on over the next six months during the season to determine what the options might be. So I don't think that, I don't think the output of that's going to be coming until after the season.
Right.
Well, I mean, just to cut to the point, I mean, I think it's, it's going to be part of the solutions. You know, something along those lines is going to have to be flushed out. So I mean, it's a choke point in those busy summer days when it's Friday afternoon, Saturday afternoon, everybody's trying to get off the island at the same time. Not to belabor it, but I think it's, it's going to be an obvious target for solving this problem.
And the numbers, Stuart, are showing really are Alapalms connector statistics, right? So you might say, well, why, if you're not, if that's off limits to talk about, why are you showing that? Because we think it's indicative of the whole island, right? In terms of those, you know, flows in terms of around, not just Alapalms connector.
And they're tracking, you're tracking breach as well, breach and what?
It's not tracking breach. I think we could look at some relevant data. Do y'all have license plate readers as you come on and off?
I know there are cameras of, I don't know if they're reading the plates over there, but I'd heard the numbers are maybe in the million and a half annual crossings over there on breach versus.
Yeah, I'm not sure what those numbers are, but I know, I know Sullivan's has the license plate readers. We could, if that data is available, we could go and sort of synthesize that data, get daily counts by time of day, similar to what we have. But DOT does not have that data readily available on their website.
But it's certainly less than.
Yeah.
Pardon me?
It's certainly less.
Yeah, right, but it's going to impact, it's going to be a, still a pretty good percentage of the total, and we got to consider everything.
I mean, the ADT that DOT is saying, I mean, twenty nineteen, that'd be about eight thousand three hundred daily trips over the bridge.
And what, what year is that? I'm sorry, Stuart.
Eight thousand or something like that.
So we do, you do have the.
Well, this, this is only one point. It doesn't have sort of the daily and hourly information.
That's over.
Okay. Don't have as granular the data.
Correct. The only ones that have the really granular.
Okay.
Every hour of the day, every five minute bins type thing. So that's why we do that analysis for the IOP connector, but not for each.
But you're saying the averages are a little over eight thousand a day? Okay, that'd be over two million, man.
Two thousand, twenty nineteen, twenty forty.
So are the roads on the Alapalms, or I guess any community, you, there is a point, to your point, Rick, that they just can only pass so much through. It, it appears that we are hitting a point that the, that the flow of traffic degrades to kind of a, and I know that people give levels of service, you know, A, B, C, D, or F, but that we're kind of hitting this magic point in flow that the flow degrades down, and if we get congestion and gridlock. Is that point something that, I guess, first of all, could it be identified? Could it be studied? And if we could identify it and study it, is there, is there anything that could be done to adjust, adjust for it? We're hitting it every July weekend. Could there be solutions to deal with that, or is that kind of is what it is? If you have a ton of cars trying to be put through?
My, my simple, either you do one of two things, either one, you expand the capacity, or you spread it out and manage the demand better, I think, to respond to that question, right?
Try to offset the times that traffic's coming.
So everybody gets an assigned space, you're allowed two hours, and then you must leave, or you're booted.
Are you, are you looking for us to get ideas on how to, you know, we've, we've got the, the traffic's going to come. It's more, how do we optimize the flow and reduce the congestion? And, you know, where the, we've got some obvious pain points. I mean, do you want to hear what those are?
No, I think, I think we're kind of through with the.
Yeah.
Number, right? We ready?
That was very good. Yeah, thank you for that.
Well, can I ask one, one number question? So if we had unlimited space in a community, what is based on the daily curve that we just saw, the bell curve? What is the capacity of the connector at forty-five miles an hour to handle how many vehicles optimum? What is the, I'm not optimum, at the max?
Submit to demand?
If, if everybody climbed in their car and drove at forty-five miles an hour from Mount Pleasant or Charleston or North Charleston, how many vehicles, and again, I'm, I'm deferring to the, the curve, the average daily vehicles during that time of day? How many vehicles could, would, would potentially come? In other words, we know that we've got about twenty thousand vehicles per day on average annually coming over to the community. What, what could the connector handle? What could we be looking at like if word got out and everybody wanted to come over here? What's the worst case? Forget that there's no parking.
We have to forget about parking, and you have unlimited capacity.
That's right. We're going to.
What would be the, what would be the un-constrained demand, I think is what we're talking about.
You have to look at hourly, I would think, right?
Yeah.
So, so this, let me just look at this graph right here if I can, right?
So this is a, this is a Memorial Day to Labor Days. Weekday directional by hour. So what it's saying here essentially is this vector, this yellow gold is inbound, and this is outbound, the other kind of gray color, right? So what it's really saying is for the, for the capacity you have out there, you kind of see it comes up to a certain point. And right around here, that's about all you can fit through, right? So.
I guess that's what I'm asking.
You're asking for demand, but I'm just saying, this is, this is basically what you can service today is approximately.
But it isn't at all contingent upon light, light timing and all of that. I mean, you're just talking, you're talking about an unfrothing. Right, without constraints, and we have bottlenecks on either end. We have lights and traffic on either end. You're talking about unrestricted with no bottlenecks on either end. What's the capacity? It's much more than this, but you can't ignore the fact that on each end in that corridor, we have. Right, we have bottlenecks built in. And I know there's studies that are going to look at that separately. That, that was the conversation at City Council last night. But I mean, just the, the road without bottlenecks has much higher capacity.
Sure.
That's correct.
Right, that's correct.
So again, if everyone, if everyone followed that pattern, I'm looking for that. Um, what is, what would? What is, what would be the potential for the worst case in terms of that?
Without, Sandy, are you asking without lights on either end of the, without, without lights on either end of the bridge? It's a math equation of how many, if, you know, you got how many vehicles, you got the length of the, of the connector.
I understand.
But it would be, it would be much greater than that, yeah.
Nineteen hundred cars, thousand, one thousand nine hundred cars, passenger cars per hour per lane is what you would use for like a freeway, but no constraints on either.
Nineteen, what did you say?
Nineteen hundred, one thousand nine hundred.
Okay.
When you get into a signalized intersection, general rule of thumb that I've heard, and I, I don't know where I found or remember hearing this, it's about nine hundred cars per lane can be processed by a signal. And obviously, a signal, a lot of factors depend because you've got different phases, what's the side street volume, how much time do you have to give it? But I've heard just a, a rough ballpark, you can assume is nine hundred is the maximum you could ever process through a, a single lane at an intersection.
Right.
And this is about reaching that nine hundred.
Right, to get to that point, that's what's, what's, what that number is maxing out is how many cars can get through the traffic light. When the traffic's backed up all the way to the gates of Wild Dunes, it has nothing to do with how many lanes we have. That's how many cars can get through the traffic light at rifle range roads.
Right, the intersections are really controlled.
Right.
Yes.
So would, could that stretch out at the top? Let's say we went all the way up to nine hundred, is, will it, will the hours of operation over time stretch out and become worse after? Right now, that, that peak is somewhere between two and three o'clock for the exiting vehicles backing up and it, and the number's eight hundred and.
In other urban areas, yes, that happens. In other words, if you take a, an area in any, or any, any mid-sized city, you have a pretty distinct morning rush hour, right? And it's, it's about an hour, or let's just say it is, let's say it is an hour. And then when it becomes really totally congested, that hour, you kind of reach all you can fit through there, then the hours, if somebody says, I'm gonna get a little earlier and get in front of that rush hour so I can get, or I'm gonna wait a little bit later, so that peak spreads to two hours. And then it spreads to three, that's, so that's what you're going at, Mr. Stone, correct?
I believe so.
Yeah, but no one's gonna find some of that.
But no one's gonna voluntarily want to leave the beach at eight or nine o'clock at night to, with, they're gonna want to leave at three o'clock when they want to leave. I'm not just being hypothetically a little bit. Compared to normal rush hour, it's hard to say, don't leave the beach, stay at the beach until it gets dark and then leave.
So my point, where I'm going.
Yeah.
Is that there could be more ingress, we're not maxed out on the ingress side, we're, we're below the exit timing. What if that were to change and it were to expand from two till four, two till five with nine hundred vehicles? We're not maxed, we're maxed out, but our charts could be worse considerably.
And project it on over here before it starts to clear up, that's what you're.
And until something, to Marty's point, is done with potentially the connector, let's say you do two lanes out, um, one in, uh, during those peak times, I think there would be a lot of, of relief at that point.
Keep in mind, you still gotta get through those intersections.
And just the.
You have the.
Yeah. And it's not only a two lane here, there's a lot of logistics that would have to change, exactly, the lights, the, the intersections would have to be redrawn potentially.
Are you, we'd be feeding two lanes into one back on the other side of the connector, so that would have to be expanded as well for a while. Right before, right before the town, yeah, before town center there, it, it comes off the connector, you're back feeding into one before you go back up to.
Right after rifle range, it becomes two again.
Yeah.
So you take up the bike path.
It's pretty easy to modify a signal, right?
From a timing standpoint or?
To handle more flows at certain times versus.
It's trade-offs. You can adjust it to have more, say, coming on the island, if you would, but then that means your side streets that you would assume would be traffic leaving, but then be impacted, so, so like, you know, there's only so much room in the pie, so if you were to make one bigger, you're taking the other one, making it smaller.
But, but to, like, to physically make the adjustment is a pretty simple thing. There's some analysis that needs to be considered, but it's a pretty.
It's punches, buttons in the head.
Yeah. I want, the one thing I had a question on before we leave the data point was this chart, I know, uh, Steve mentioned it a, a minute ago, but, um, the, whether it's Monday or Sunday, I, I guess that's irrelevant, but there was some other graphic, you said that Monday was the highest daily traffic? I don't, I don't know.
I think it was in the inbound.
I was on the DOT, this dashboard that they have.
It just doesn't even look like that jives with this, so that's the only clarification I would be curious about.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not exactly sure how they created this, we can, we can.
I don't think it's a huge point, I just, I was just looking at it, eyeballing it, it looks like that doesn't stir the Kool-Aid.
Just curious, you don't happen to have January twenty-two number, do you?
I, we've not analyzed it, but it is, it'll, uh, we get, you know.
Just the total average per day, because it was what, fifteen thousand last year? Yeah, the, I think another thought from the community is that the shoulder seasons disappear.
Meaning it's become one full season?
Yeah, I mean, I think if you looked ten years ago, it might have been more of a head and shoulder, and now it's becoming a lot of shoulder.
Yeah.
A lot of head, whatever.
Probably can't see it well, see that, but down here, this is twelve AM to twelve AM, so essentially this is your daily traffic, and this is, the grays are weekends. So I mean, nineteen thousand a week of, or day, New Year's Day. And then the, the second was fourteen thousand, then the Monday after was thirteen, bumps around fifteen and sixteen on Friday, then back down twelve on the first non-holiday Saturday.
You'd have to, if you don't, if it's not readily available, don't worry about it.
Yeah, I mean, generally, uh, it's looking like it's between fourteen and sixteen for, for most of January.
There you go, four forty, four forty-one at the end of the month, that's the total. Yeah, divide that by thirty-four.
So they haven't worked a fifty thousand a month.
Okay, that's right, yeah.
Plenty of data there.
Oh, yeah.
Wanna go dig?
No, no, it's not, not here.
But it is interesting sometimes to look at it and try to, you know, understand the subtleties of the difference. I've got, I've got some questions I would like to throw out there to begin the general discussion about maybe pitch points, maybe ideas of things that, uh, jog your thoughts about potential improvements and, um, so I guess I'd like to just throw out some ideas as, if we're through with the data for the time being, we can always come back to it. Because what we wanna do is understand what types of projects make sense to include into this comprehensive plan, right? So I wanna take a little bit of time to, to talk about different ideas and thoughts, and I'd like to kind of get your reaction. I guess ultimately, we would, the goal would be, I'm just thinking out loud, so please tell me I'm right or wrong, is we'd want traffic to flow out here during the summertime, pretty much like it does in the wintertime. Is that a fair general head nod assessment or any other things that say, but, but do this or that, or anything like that? That's. I'd like to not sit at the light more than one rotation. One cycle light, okay, that's good, that's kind of thing I, we, we'd like to, and, and primarily, we're talking about the one palm and IOP connector, correct? Okay. And as a year round, you said that's, that would be a great goal if we could accomplish that. Yes. I'm not promising that. Hypothetically.
Yes, sir. Oh, oh, you know, one of the things to go through this is, um, traffic across the island, so we, we focus on the connector, but, you know, our residents can't traverse, traverse across the island dirt because of the congestion there, so that would be one of the things I would ask you, if you look at is, how can we get people not going to the connector past it?
Not going, not having to go through that intersection to go from one end of the island to the other, that's a great point. Because we don't have a grid system here, we basically got.
We've got one, one path out.
Basically road, yeah.
So that, that would be my, um, and then, yeah. Question is, is, is there anything that could be done to eliminate that, that area from impacting people that don't want to go through it?
Yeah, that's, that's gonna be difficult, obviously.
I figured.
Because we've got some landmarks there, the park and the neighborhood in there that it would be, it would be, uh,
it would just be, it was okay, we're gonna take Palm and just, you know, build our grid this way, so we have two options to get through there. But there's no way you're gonna get through that part.
Yeah, or that neighborhood.
The neighborhood, so. Obviously, it's easier to run in. We'll, we'll note it, it'd be great if we could have better north, south, whatever, whatever, you know, one end and out the other without having to go through that intersection. And maybe there's some kind of intersection design where we got bypass lanes, then, I don't know, we'll.
Yeah, so.
We'll note that.
Well, I think the whole. Yes, I understand that the, the connector and that corridor is being looked at as a separate study, and that, that's obviously gonna impact the lights at each end.
Sure.
But we have so much impact after you get through that light.
Talking, oh, I'm sorry.
I was getting comfortable, we're having a workshop, you know, we have so much impact after you get through that light as far as how we route the traffic through Front Beach, how we route the traffic to the park. And I'm not sure that's gonna be looked at as part of this other study, but how do, how do we handle every weekend, Front Beach is basically, you don't go there, it, it, there's so much traffic and backed up in so many directions, how do we alleviate that?
Well, should we talk about one of the ones that keeps coming up that the park is part of the issue?
Right, I think, I think you're right.
Yeah.
And I think there may be some things you could do perhaps in terms of how the park loads its vehicles.
Right.
That gets them off of that road, right? If we. It was backed up this afternoon for people trying to get in.
Are you talking about the county park?
Twelve thirty today, yes. Just briefly, they opened the second gate.
You know, and you, I'm sure you all have seen, yeah, I'm sure you've, you've seen many parks like this, but do you still see people paying on the ingress side when you've got volumes like this?
Uh, there's different way to manage, there are different ways, uh, different parks do it different ways, okay? And I think there's some options here to consider. Of course, we don't own the park, but we could, I think, have a conversation, or maybe you're having conversations, I don't know. But one of the things I would think in terms of how you collect the revenue coming in or out, and the other thing is, do you have a, a throat, in other words, a driveway where you can get them off of your street into here, you know, before it really starts, you know, and then take the tickets or whatever.
Yeah, how do you, how do you, how do you eliminate the gate, basically, on the in, on the inflow on a busy day? That would, I think that would solve a lot of the, uh, early morning weekend agitation.
Because it seems to me a lot of times, with, again, I, I don't have the, quite the experience that you folks have, but one of the main things is it comes down here from Palm and it, it's stacking up here and then it spills back into here.
And hasn't that, hasn't that been rerouted now? It's been rerouted through the neighborhood or around, uh, on Tenth because, or, yeah, because of the, uh, the backup, so it's not even coming in through Palm to get to the gate anymore. It's actually coming, yeah, there you go, there you go.
Yeah, they're cutting, they're cutting the traffic from going straight.
Yeah, so to treat, yeah, to treat.
They're making them go right.
Routing traffic around through.
To extend the queue.
Which is, yeah.
So I guess, I guess, valuation, maybe how that's fit.
Is there a better way to do that?
Is there a better way to do it, right?
And I think.
So we're, we're taking those, right, Josh? You raise your hand now, yeah?
So what, what options on something like that would you say?
Yeah, and I think obviously the challenge with all of these are, we don't own any of this stuff, we don't own the county park, we don't own the streets, so what, what I look at the plan has to do is give us the, the priorities and talking points, so we can go to these other stakeholders and say, here's what we think the priority is, how do we move forward? Because we can't do any of this by ourselves.
Right.
So I mean, you know, you guys coming up with some concepts and saying, here's the kind of things that you should be going and talking to the county about, or to the state, or evaluating, and, and kind of prioritizing that list, so we can say, okay, what's, what's the next on the list? What can we go do? Because again, we don't, we can't do any of it, really. I mean, other than a couple of streets on Front Beach, we don't own much.
We own Ocean Boulevard, and, and for the, for the benefit of the group, um, we have had, we had a meeting last week with the park specifically about, you know, could they pay on exit? Could you stack deeper in before you collect the money? Could you kind of do the Chick-fil-A, you know, have four people checking in, going up the road? I will just say that they, you know, they have a way of doing things that they are very attached to, and, you know, it's part of their experience and part of, um, that while they did indicate, you know, a, a desire to improve the situation, um, there, there were just certain things that they kind of wouldn't, wouldn't even consider, I would guess, that would be a nice way of saying it, but all that to say that we are, we are actively engaged with their staff, trying to come up with solutions, uh, that would, that would make that a better situation.
Sure, sure. I think maybe there's some things that we could throw out to help stimulate the discussion, perhaps, I don't know, so I think we oughta, we owe it to you to look at it.
That's what we're looking for, some, some points, talking points, strategies, saying, here's, let's talk about these type of things.
Sure, sure. So, so this, this park access is one, right? That we'd wanna kind of put on our list, but let's look, but, um, how about coming down here and feeding into this angle parking down here? Is that working okay, you think, or is that?
Not when the county parks backed up. Well, really, like, that, without that being fixed, we're just, you know, I don't know what we're doing. I mean, really, all, that is, that is.
Let's assume we could get the county park fixed.
And then, then the traffic will probably be flowing.
Then it'll be okay, you're saying, then, but this would be.
Depends on what we're charging for that lot.
Not everyone coming down Fourteenth Avenue off of the connector is going to the park. Some of that traffic is waiting to get to our parking area and/or slots on Front Beach there on Ocean Boulevard.
Right.
So it's, uh, I think it's a multi-use, I don't think you can.
But is the, and I guess this is a question maybe for Douglas, is, is the county lot backing everything up actually hindering, um, our ability to fill our lots?
What, what it sounded to me, you know, so this had the power chief, their operations people, it sounded very much like the entire place is full at ten AM. And then they start this kind of one in, one out, and to me, it sounded like that was really the problem. It wasn't, if there was endless space, I think there wouldn't be the problem, everybody would just get to their space, park and go to the beach. But it's, it's when it, when it gets full, it just creates this gridlock kind of instantly in all directions. That's, that's to me how it, how it sounds.
So it's people waiting for the person to exit, for them to.
Right, and that was their, you know, that was kind of their, um, response to the Chick-fil-A model of just take all their money. They said, well, really, when our problem is, is when there's not a place to direct them, so, you know, we'd be, we could certainly take their money, but then they'd still be sitting out in the road waiting for.
Congestion more of the eight to ten in the morning time, I mean, I, up till the ten, I mean, I live down the street and it doesn't, it seems like after ten thirty, eleven o'clock, it's pretty much not backed up so much.
I, I got the impression that it, that it was pretty acute all morning, and then there was a little all in the, in the kind of lunchtime, and then it, it got back to then the, the exiting, uh, being the same problem that, you know, they're now can't get out of the park and they're, they're sitting in the park, and that was their, their, um, resistance to taking payment at the end was, you know, you now have this, you have this gridlock and they're wanting to leave, and it's a two-hour wait to get out of the park. They gave examples of people calling nine one one, saying we're being held hostage for money and, you know, it, I think people get.
But it's still a manual, I mean, just the fact that it's a manual process is quite stunning. Do we have problems at the other county, or, excuse me, city lots with backups for people pulling in? And how is the payment for that handled?
Well, that's done by kiosk, I mean, and there is some, another part of it is, is they, they have zero leakage right now. I mean, every person that comes in there pays and, you know, we kind of talked about if that was necessary into them, it, it was kind of a bright line. But I think, I think that it may flow past there better, but I don't think it's, I think it's still kind of gridlocked in the whole district. Chief Cornet would really be the one to ask about exactly when the gridlock begins and things get full. You know, and Stan Tech has the, you all did the aerial, um, they, and I think you all have seen that project where they took aerial photography, kind of, I think it was every thirty minutes or every hour. They took aerial photography, kind of, I think it was every thirty minutes or every hour. And so it really showed a good time lapse of when it filled up, you know, and then it kind of got to. Gridlock and then it, in the afternoon, obviously, it thinned out. And I, I think that was a, it was a big weekend, I think that you did that. It may have been Fourth of July or Memorial Day, it was a major, but certainly would, would be good, um, information to kind of. Re-look at is when it, when it gets fully.
Now, have you, have you ever looked at ways to incentivize people to even out that flow? So, you know, if you come in early, your price is different for your parking. And some places do that, they do time of day as you're coming to. You can even incentivize people to spread that load out a little bit. Is that part of the solutions you could?
It, it, it could be, we have to look at it, of course, uh. You can incentivize it when you do the parking, like you've seen in our cities where the early bird parking, you get in for five bucks. You come in nine o'clock, it's ten bucks or whatever, right? But you. If you're dealing with the county park, they have their own stipulations, they've got a gold pass. If you've got a gold pass, you can get in without anything. So that would be a hard sell, I think, for them. Now, maybe if you did your, your lot.
Even a lot of.
But if you're talking about the public road, sometimes that's very difficult to do. Now, they do. They do this in other large cities where they, you know, they have a, you know, you've heard the word Lexus lanes or, you know, toll, you know.
Express.
Express lanes, where if you want to get there by the gallon, you can, but they vary the rate based on the time of day. But they keep it flowing at like sixty miles an hour. And they change the rate to make sure it doesn't choke down. So, uh, I don't know if we're there in terms of parking yet. But we only control, really, we, we can't charge for parking on Palm or left places, right? The only place that, that would happen to be is this lot right here. Or. These kiosks, right?
Yeah, but that's, they've got, but that would still be probably sixty seven odd percent of the downtown park that we can control.
Yeah.
So they've, they've got four hundred and forty odd spots in their lot and we've got, what, six plus, six hundred plus on, on our, in our.
We'll make a note of that.
The county park did indicate that this season they were gonna, uh, and I think it's double on the weekends. So they, they've, yeah, they've, they've done that at the holiday. The lights festival out at the county park on James Island. Kind of just charging a higher rate when the demand is highest to hopefully kind of push people to other dates. And I, and I'm sure that. City council would have an interest in somewhat kind of matching that in the city's lot with an idea of spreading that as much as we could.
Suggestion pricing is the official term.
Right.
So we could look at terms of. So these, these four, these four hundred spots. So these four hundred spots are causing all of this gridlock in downtown, is that what you're saying, Scott? There's only four hundred spots in there?
There's four, four, four forty-two.
That's I seventeen, remember? Okay.
I would challenge that you have to add the other six hundred city lot has that are all coming down Fourteenth Avenue to go to both of those lots.
That, that's why I kind of asked, that was kind of the question is, is what's.
No, I, I agree, I agree that they're, that they're also, you know, creating volume, but we've got control over what we can do with those. Those spaces.
So do, do we know?
And we literally are now routing traffic around, around the town to get to the county parking lot.
So do we know when the county lot is actually full? Because I mean, if you lessen the number and the lot's not full, it really doesn't probably have a big effect, um. I think we do, I think your aerials would tell us the time that.
Now, those are, those are good slides.
Those are, those are old now, they're twenty fourteen and stuff like that.
So that's the ingress backup that has the potential in the mornings for. Causing residents issue to be able to get the lows and get their plumbing supplies. The. Egress, uh, I think is more daunting and more regular because in my mind, it's not spread out. As much as the ingress side. The ingress side I see is very spread out. It's sporadic, not sporadic, but you know, it's kind of eight till, till ten or eleven. And the, in the, the egress side of, of our gridlock, I believe, and it's kind of bared out in one of your. Graphs here is the two till three, uh, timing there, maybe two till four. Two till four, um, yeah, some, some slight variations. And that's where, I live a mile from the connector. And I've been stuck at my house for over an hour, I couldn't get out onto my Waterway Boulevard. And I think those are the, the serious, um. Issues where people are darting all over the side streets and it's. It's all three directions, Palm South, Palm North and Fourteenth onto the Front Beach. Uh, um, that are all, all funnel into one lane on the connector.
Sandy, you're taking the words right out of my mouth. I was about to switch gears too, if you didn't. But, uh, that to me is from a resident's perspective. And any fellow commissioners could correct me if I'm wrong, but it's the egress, it's the afternoon congestion that's more impactful to the folks that live out here. You know, in the morning times when there's a rush to get on the island, we're sleeping our beds or hanging out in our front yard doing something. But, uh, it's trying to get out in the afternoons or the evenings is the real challenge. You know, and the bottleneck occurs. I'm not as far down as Sandy, but I'm on that same side and the bottleneck occurs at that, um, S curve. And folks try to, try to outsmart the situation and go down Waterway and then next thing. Yeah. That's right, so all the residential streets get, um, turn into a parking lot. And that's whenever, y, y, you know, people get really frustrated because there's cars sitting in front of your, in front of your house. You can't even get out of your driveway, can't even get in your, into your driveway, even if you went down the road to see a neighbor for five minutes. And that's, and that's pretty prevalent. That's right. That's pretty prevalent from Memorial Day through, um. I, I would say the end of July, quite honestly. And, um, to, to me, that's the biggest, the biggest problem from a traffic standpoint. And I think there's other things too, but.
Any idea how far down the island that condition? Your twenty-fourth?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
Down to twenty-eighth or.
So.
It's all the way.
It's, it goes all the way to forty-first.
All the way to forty-first.
Especially if it's a thunderstorm day, you, I can look out my back door and it's a lot of cars.
I can offer this, on twenty-second, I've seen several, several times, uh, backups on my street for a four to five hour duration on Saturdays.
From Palm to Waterway.
Uh, yeah, well.
Because people.
Four, four, five hours, what, what, four, five hours?
I would say three PM to eight PM.
So the same, you're saying there's traffic in front of your house for hours, not that it takes a car four hours to get off.
There's cars sitting in, in front of my driveway for a steady four hour to five hour stint.
Different, different cars.
Different cars.
They move, that's very slow.
It'll take you an hour to get up through Palm Boulevard at times.
Oh, yeah. When you are, you can take an hour to get out.
So I, I hop on the golf cart and then you're battling everybody on Waterway Boulevard who got us smart. So then you gotta break the law and drive on the side of the road. I didn't do that.
So Marty, you were saying that S curve, but they're backed up all the way to like Highway seventeen, right? Not that, it's not that it's free flowing after the S curve, is it?
Oh, no, I just meant that the S curve is a pinch point. It's where Waterway and the traffic that originally was on Palm collide and folks can't outsmart the, the side streets, um.
And you've got Waterway is also kind of pinching and trying to turn right. So it gets, you know.
Well, Waterway turns, turns in on twenty-first.
Twenty-first, yeah.
That, yeah, that's the funnel right there where your, where your mouse is.
They've got people trying to turn right.
If you, yeah, if you can imagine that as the funnel, it just, all the side streets begin to fill up north of there.
So basically what happens is when it backs up, now you've got two lanes. Palm and the people coming off of Waterway trying to get into the one lane on. The main part of Palm. So, once it backs up, it takes a long time for it to clear out.
So just out of curiosity, I've never sat through it, but if you were, if you left your house and you were gonna leave via Sullivan's Island. Would that be the, would that be a quicker route once you got past twenty-first? Or it's gonna be the identical situation in that route, exit route?
It's probably not identical, but I don't think there's a real clear better alternative.
Yeah, one of the, they're both gonna be equal.
Yeah, it's enough to. Like I said, what happens is if there's like a wreck or something on the connector, then it backs up. Once they clear the connector, once you get to twenty or to Palm in front of the, uh, shopping center. It moves, it's just getting to that, you can't get to that point anymore because of the gridlock that's formed.
And once you get to the connector, it does move.
It, yes.
Till you hit the traffic on Sullivan's Island, leaving on the causeway.
Well, yeah.
Which is similarly bottlenecked.
I probably haven't tested enough different, uh, theories and routes on different days to, to make an informed. Decision on that, but I know that, yeah, y, y, it's bad enough, you kind of just submit and, and decide not to go anywhere on Saturdays.
Yes, so Stuart, there is a little. Canal behind the red, behind the Harris teeter that goes from twenty-first. That's the property of the DOTs. You see that right? And I don't know, yeah, that, so it's, it's, it's a marsh and it's a drainage canal, but it runs right, right there. And I don't know what, you know, you're then at an elevated point of the connector and, um.
You think, could you?
Could you?
Make a connection there to get over there?
Yeah, kind of have multiple lanes and avoid that, avoid that S curve.
Yeah.
I think that, I think it belongs to the DOT until twentieth. And then, you know, then that.
There is a drainage easement in there, but it, I don't think you're gonna get a lot of buy-in from any of those residents to.
Well, wouldn't have to answer the question, is the, is it backing up on the connector? It's pushing it all the way back to the S curve? I mean, if you want even, is there even a way that they could get onto the connector if they were? The volume is backing up all the way on the connector over to rifle range.
Well, that's what, right, I think David was saying that, you're saying that that's not necessarily true.
Well, no, I think that's what starts it, but once, once you've backed cars on all three, all those three lanes trying to get into that intersection. Once it clears in the front, you still got the bottleneck at twenty-first. That takes another hour or two to clear.
It would be interesting to know, they did work with the light at rifle range. You were talking about the lights and the impediments to, to the flow. I think that when they worked with the lights, there was some noticeable improvements with the egress off of, uh, of the Isle of Poms.
What, what is it, last year, last summer?
Um, I don't know. My question really would be to, to ask what, what was done and how, how, um, did they observe. Higher count and a better flow out of here. Um, because there were days, um, when we really, it was slow. But you didn't sit for an hour or forty-five minutes, it may have been twenty minutes. As a result of they, they held the light.
Green or pushed out.
For the connector, leaving the community.
So I would, um, just again, for the benefit of the group. Another meeting was held with the, um, Town of Mount Pleasant Police and our police chief. And, and Sullivan's Island Police Chief and to talk about the practice of holding those lights at rifle range. There was a time when the, and I think it was last year, it may have been two years ago, when the city was hiring county sheriffs. And apparently it created quite a rift between the two because they felt, the Town of Mount Pleasant Police felt like the county sheriffs were giving the Exodus. Traffic too much priority. And it was back in rifle range, which was creating, you know, spill, spill down effects for. For those residents, so.
They didn't want to share the risk?
Yes, so they have, um, you know, they, I think they have an agreement now that the Town of Mount Pleasant would manually override that light. On weekends, especially, you know, if there's a rainstorm, I think everybody kind of acknowledges that an afternoon shower on the weekends is gonna be gridlock and they would go manually do that. They, they seem to kind of indicate that the county just would leave it green and basically kind of take a nap. And they would just be backing up and that there was not an efficient kind of manual judgment being made, giving priority to one or the other. But I do think the chiefs are working together on improving that particular light. And I think they believe that the best, the most efficient flow is not gonna be an automated light. It's gonna be some person putting eyes on, you know, which is more backed up. So, I mean, it's still, it sounds like it's still, the backups are still gonna come, obviously. It's gonna be maybe a little bit better handled, um, through manual operation.
Being an analog guy in a technical world, um, I always thought that they needed to have walkie-talkies, if you will, if that's what they use anymore. Cell phones to communicate what the, the situation is and to react with the lights appropriately.
Yeah.
Here at our intersection and at rifle range for, you know, how, how that.
Yeah, and that, that, they are definitely, you know, in constant communication, definitely on those busy weekends as well. And, and also the same was, um, agreed upon with the park, park that we would share a sheriff at the, at the intersection. Uh, sharing that expense of having somebody man that intersection during those busy weekend, summer days.
Palm, Palm and.
Palm and the bottom of the, at the bottom of the connector. Right now, the, our police department will put a barricade, I think, eight, nine AM and just block incoming traffic, make it go around. That, um. That ruffled the, the park's feathers because they, you know, that's, when they do it at eight, that is, that is not, they're not yet full. So I think that they'll come to some agreement that they will make the traffic flow smoothly till it's full. And then once the one in, one out starts, they'll, they'll then kind of divert it and then do the same. Analog direction, uh, on the Exodus.
It's, it's not to oversimplify or just to say what I think. You know, in the twenty-five years I've been here, the, the, once you get to the connector, I've seen it managed a lot of different ways. And it's, there's, you can say, okay, I'm finally, the connector's gonna take me twenty minutes, but I'm gonna get out of here sooner or later through rifle range. I think what's changed is, is it never take, used to take an hour to get to the connector. You know, it's, so I, I think there've been lots, lots of different schemes, as you point about how they're trying to manage the light at rifle range and have people block lanes down here or have sheriffs standing there. And once that happened and once North and South Palm hit it and they all came together and you got on the connector, it was like, okay, I can breathe, breathe a sigh of relief, it's twenty minutes, I'm, I'm gonna get through rifle range. But it never used to be what you're talking about, an hour or more getting congested back in the streets on the island. That's what the big change has been.
What is caused that, is the man or operations?
Well, there's more cars, obviously, so it's hard to, you know.
You just showed us, we've got three thousand.
I think it's demand driven for sure. I mean, we've increased the capacity of our parking spaces over the past couple of years and that's, so you got more people stored and ready to spring whenever, you know, three, four o'clock in the afternoon.
So I would say we, I would say we've decreased, have, I think that we've decreased capacity.
Parking.
Parking, and I guess I was wondering if, and it wouldn't make sense because it's, it's happening on the Exodus. But you used to be able to freely park up all the avenues? Uh, you used to be able to freely parallel park?
I don't think we filled up our parking as, as much in the past, even though we had more, probably, probably more parking available in the past years. It didn't fill up ever, except on occasional, you know, the week, uh, holiday weekends. Most of the time, we wouldn't fill it up. So I don't think the, I think we do have more people parking on the island than we did ten years ago. They're just parking in fewer spaces.
And seconding that, I, I agree, I think it's become more prevalent. We always had the crazy weekend, the crazy day or two here or there, or the rainy Sunday, and that was kind of expected. But for on a normal weekday, summer, Thursday afternoon, to have an hour backup was just unheard of. And that's, you know, that's what's changed.
And is there the perception that there is not enough parking spots? If you go down to forty or thirty, they're, they're parking spots, people just want to park there instead of. So that the whole, you know, complaint that we don't have enough parking or there are not parking spots available? They're available, they're just down, they're at the, you know, the end of the island or where the, you know, where the designated parking is, but everybody wants to park here.
I, I think that.
That's where the facility.
Over time, you know, there was kind of a strategy of, of spreading the park. You know, that it was so dense, you know, twenty-fifth, twenty-first, that there was kind of, and it would, and it would go all the way up into the avenues. And it, you know, incrementally, we, we enacted the program that didn't allow you to park up the avenues. We enacted programs.
For the residential parking.
Didn't let you get close, yeah, didn't let you get close to the intersections, don't let you double park. Then we, uh, perpendicular instead of parallel. So there's been kind of five, six different little steps, all aimed at spreading that load. And to me, that, I mean, I think. And to me that, I mean, I think that's. That's certainly changed. I mean, I don't know if that if that would have the effect of.
I think it's simpler than that. I think we've got, like you showed earlier, we got three thousand more cars a day coming over here. The more volume is going to create more backup if you've got a finite.
Yeah, regardless of the parking situation. So let me just pitch some stupid idea to you guys and you, when you go back to the office and you're analyzing stuff. Um, I took one traffic planning class in college. That was only because it was an afternoon lecture. They want to get up in the mornings. Um, what if you killed that left turn signal? And this is something that wouldn't require any sort of manual. Um, representation there at the, yeah, there you go, at our single traffic light. What if you killed the left turns off the island? Um, coming from breach inlet side. You put a barricade in the left turn lane. That way, that protected signal doesn't get a rotation. And there's more people that can turn right from our problem area, from the north side continually. Would that help? Is that possible?
Well, now that I was going to break up this is if you go back down the other side of Palm, you have kind of the same effect actually occurs back. Where it goes two to one lane. So once it backs up, it backs up past that that section. So if you're coming from breach inlet, trying to get to the Wild Dunes, you're stuck in gridlock.
Yeah, well, yeah.
This has nothing to do with trying to get off the connector. It's the fact that you can't get through that intersection because the traffic's backed up for all the people wanting to. That want to turn left. The point you're making is, yes, the more single phases you take out, the more you can share with others to move cars more effectively. So if you do take it out, my my thinking is if we don't allow people from. This part of the down part of Palm.
They have to go to breach. That's right. Well, I mean, you know, it's, that's something that's, it'll be an education piece, but people will learn. I'm thinking of Sullivan's Island. They don't have a signal, but. That's what, yeah, there you go.
Sorry, I just interrupted for a second because we're four forty five. I just wanted to make sure it was timed. This is obviously a major issue. And we'll come up, we'll try to explore some ideas and stuff. Are there any other issues on the island? That you say this is a concern that we want to put in the map and the plan?
Yeah, I got one. So uh, just on any given day now, like I'll take President's Day. It's a holiday in February. February's been traditionally a pretty low month. It's not really the case anymore, especially if there's a holiday and the weather's good. Just the continuous flow on Palm Boulevard. As someone who's trying to walk across the beach with their toddler, it's hard to find a gap in cars to cross the street. So some traffic calming devices, ideas along those lines. I'd be interested to see what you guys on that, yeah.
I just want to make sure that we kind of talk about all the problems. That's obviously. I was curious about if anyone was going to say anything about Marina. But it sounds, no one jumped right to that. Yeah, traffic, transportation issues related to it.
A park, definite parking problems. Unto itself.
How about transit? We had the transit thing last year, the bus came over from county.
I never saw anybody riding.
It was not an effective mode of transportation.
Not a valiant first effort, Sandy?
I know, I I was disappointed that um so much energy was put into it. Honestly, I don't think our society is um. Thinking about that at all. And it was, it kind of came out that uh. Perhaps nobody is interested in mass transit.
So what if?
I don't, I disagree with that. I think that there are people that would like to, I I rode the bus and um. It was a big bus. People could not take their chairs or any of their beach equipment on the bus. The parking for the uh getting on and departing was in town center next to one of the retail stores. So it was not conducive for even accessing the, you know, getting on or getting off the bus. Um, the frequency was an hour between um, you know, getting on or getting off and with traffic that could extend to an hour, hour and a half. My experience with mass transit is you've got, you know, fifteen minute intervals. You've got smaller, you know, for for here, we probably, and it was a full size forty person, beautiful. It's a beautiful bus. And it was uh, it just, it's not conducive for um a a mass transit beach experience. And, you know, if they could, if you could provide a space over, you know, it's been tossed around, well, what about using the DMV? It's a state property. You're probably sound open on weekends, but a hundred uh cars in there. Um, you know, what about parking there, you know, on a shuttle, you're coming over here every fifteen minutes. You can bring your coolers. You can bring your beach equipment. Of those kinds of things, um, you know, if you look at other communities, it's frequency, it's convenience, and you get to pack in and pack out what you bring with you. We did not, none of that was being offered with the current um with the current model. So, you know, but still, you know, a lot of, a lot of people say if you come all the way over here and you want to, you're going to park at the DMV, you're going to want to probably bring your car all the way over. So there's still. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't give up on mass transit just yet.
I would to kind of echo that sentiment, I think the city and and Carter and the town of Mount Pleasant feel like, you know, it's still. It was kind of a first stab and. That it could be improved. Um, I do think the vehicles are going to be better this year and allow. They're going to have more capacity for beach equipment. That was definitely noted. You know, the the idea, and I don't know who originally. Where it came up, but the idea of kind of giving that shuttle priority and what would that do to demand if you kind of saw. A shuttle whiz by you and there are five minutes in and out. You know, you're going to be sitting in traffic for forty five minutes, maybe those type of incentives.
That might, that would work probably.
And bringing the Ferris wheel back, the roller coaster.
Not working now. Maybe there's some things we need to. Got to look at. Note a few things on it. Reach Beach app. Effective, helpful.
I didn't hear you.
Reach Beach app.
Parking pay?
Uh, no, not that, not that. This just, this kind of shows you cameras. It should, it gives you information about the beach and uh.
But does it, does it give somebody the information to say that or to identify where, say, an open parking spot is? One of the things I think that the people that come here deal with, they have no idea where the vacancy is. So in our, with the exception of Palm Boulevard, we don't have defined spots with the exception of the lots. So and and even inside the lots, I'm not sure how well defined our our city lot is, but to and to be able to identify where a vacant. Spot is, you have to first define your spots, I'm guessing. So if we could define our spots, we may not be able to identify a hundred percent of them, but if we could define the majority of our spots. Can't we use simple apps to tell people where the spots are? So instead of everybody racing around looking for one, they'll know where they are. Wouldn't that help direct traffic? Instead of having a free for all.
Yeah, that that and and there is technology that can do that. There is technology that, and I think there's a few garages in Charleston.
I'm a bit of a skeptic. I think I'm on the other side. Um, I don't know, regardless of the functionality of an app, I don't think that folks are going to use it. Uh, by and large, and the reason I say that is these people aren't even checking the weather. You know, they're coming out to the beach when it's going to storm in a couple hours. I don't think they're going to look for a parking spot. They're not pre-planning their beach day trip. Uh, but hey, that's just a skeptic in me.
If you got over here, Marty, and you wanted to know where the spots were, wouldn't you, wouldn't that be easier than just going hunting for them and racing around the island?
I'm not saying there couldn't be some value in it. I'm just skeptical as to how much use it's going to actually get. Now, maybe something that catches on.
What if you knew there was no vacancy? Would you come over the bridge?
I would.
They're not here all day.
So that that makes me ask is um, is that something worth looking at how our parking fills up? So that you could actually probably gauge the percentage of parking from actually a small area that is the last to fill up. Yeah, yeah. And you can take historical trends a lot of times too. On a sunny weekend, this is kind of about the time the county lot builds up, it's about time the city lot builds up. It's kind of post that perhaps. If you don't get around this time, you probably won't get a spot at these locations or something like that.
I'm not quite as skeptical as Marty, so I I think you have to keep trying to push the apps, that's that's where everything's going. So I think it would be wrong not to look at apps that can help. Um, I think the DOT cameras are fascinating. I don't think people use them enough. Um, trust me, I use them if I decide, because I'm going to go to Lowe's, okay? It's like, okay, let me see, is it, can I get through the intersection? But I don't think most people do that, but it should become a tool people are aware of and use it some more. Because they're they're very good. You look at the camera and you say, my gosh, you know, you look at that intersection, people trying to turn left and you and you laugh and say, I'm not going out there. Um, so I think that's one thing, but if 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 it's going to be a parking app, it has to be. Something much more real time. I I think what you just talked about, you know, historical trend doesn't work. People say, I don't care about that. But if there was some mechanism that said, you know, I pull up the app on my phone and it has a map of the island and and all of Palm is showing red, real time. I know either I'm not going to go or gee, that's real. Hey, all the green spots are down by fifty. And I think some type of app like that, people will get used to and start using more. It's not going to happen overnight. And there's a reason to be a little skeptical, but something like that could definitely help, I think.
A little less tech, how about this? How would you go for this? You you've seen these before, these uh short, short wave uh radio tuned to sixteen ten for traffic info. When 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 flashing or whatever, and you come over the bridge and you can you can turn that station.
Most people, most people don't know how to turn their station to sixteen ten anymore. I wouldn't know how to.
And what is, and what is AM?
Okay, all right. Wild Dunes access. Down there, the first access point, uh, I think, I think from my perspective, it used to be. Because they opened up the one at the end. Uh, but tell me, is that something we need to?
I live in Wild Dunes, so I live it. No, I don't, I wouldn't say that's a problem. Are there a certain hours here or there or a day or two here and there where it backs up at the gate, come trying to get in? Yes, but it's nothing like it used to be. It used to be horrible. And and again, people that live there, um, well, the back gate helps for sure. But even the front gate moves much more efficiently now. I mean, it's a little bit of a problem because. You know, people, residents want to go around the cars that are waiting to get passes and get in, but I think they're getting better all the time at doing that stuff. So I. It is something that might be looked at, but I don't think it's a major problem as a person that lives it every day.
Zero consensus?
I I agree. I mean, I I live on forty first and we used to just get the backup from the people trying to get in.
Exactly.
Um, the second back gate helps, uh, the way they now have. Actually, three lanes, uh, so destination Wild Dunes or or the. Resort has their own gate and the residents and the construction people have their gate. Um, I I would plead to the city for our our employee decals, so we don't have to use that construction gate. Those of us who build it. But that, no, it's, I haven't seen that problem in the last couple of years. So um, you know, and and I still, this whole time we've been talking, I I think of Holmes Law because I'm. Not not an engineer. And it works more towards plumbing, but vehicles are volume, intensity um and resistance. And 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 that's kind of works with this parking or not parking with the traffic. Um, and we're kind of looking at it from the resistance side, what's what's going to back the flow. And my only concern is if we fix this. If we had four lanes on the connector, four lanes, once you get over into Mount Pleasant. Are we solving the problem or are we just bringing more cars?
Opening it up.
You know, and and that's, that's a question. I don't know if if you in the traffic world have come to that because oftentimes. Traffic design is always behind the eight ball. They're talking about widening forty one. By the time they get that done, it's going to be undersized.
When you build it, it will come.
Sure. And and so, you know, my thought is, yeah, we love to. Kill the the choke points that are making it difficult for me to get milk on a Sunday, Saturday night at the Harris Teeter, accepting my golf cart. But um, you know. Do we have too many cars coming over and how can you? How can you restrict or define something like that? And can you, you know?
Well. Little future. Forward looking. There is in the last year or more, a tendency. Or a change in the uh demographics of our community. There are more residences in the community. And as that increases, the the traffic demand is going to be more steady. Through the. The morning into the afternoon, into the evening, as residents are moving about. And then compound that with. You know, guests coming in just simply to to be at the beach or to enjoy the front beach amenities. At different times. So I don't know how you analyze some of that for. Or I just, I I looked at the the graph you you provided, um, hadn't really occurred to me. But the uh, the inbound traffic really is pretty steady from seven thirty till four o'clock. On that that yellow, that yellow line. If you draw a line straight across from the the peak there about seven thirty. Am I looking at the wrong one? That's twenty twenty one weekday directional hourly traffic. Yeah, it's, it's, it's not flat line, but it's fairly steady. Um, our peak problem really is that uh. About two o'clock till four o'clock, arguably five o'clock, that three hour session where I would challenge, those are. Those are, those are our our neighbors leaving. Came to the beach and they're they're loaded up from seven thirty till five and now they're leaving from. Two till, you know, there's a volume in there. What do we do?
If we don't allow dogs on the beach, I bet you kill like half the traffic. If we restrict the dog rules on the beach, half of Mount Pleasant stays in Mount Pleasant, at least.
Now you got to talk about children.
So this time we've talked about congestion pretty much. Are there any safety concerns, either interaction with vehicles, cars, pedestrians? Uh, vehicles, uh, margins?
Yeah, I would say that the second point I made about traffic calming necessary on on Palm, and that's all days of the week. Uh, and a lot of it's the nine to five crowd because there's a lot of business in Wild Dunes.
Or is it to give priority to the pedestrians crossing?
Pedestrian priority. Yeah, there's some signage up right now, but um.
Do those crosswalks, do you have a?
Oh, man, you wouldn't believe how many people blow through there texting.
Yeah, I think our crosswalks are greatly under. You you don't know it so much. You're not in the right places.
I'd say that's a real safety concern.
When you have to put a cone in the middle of.
Well, and then the speed of the traffic on those side streets. See, people cut through the residential streets now, um, and they're going way over fifteen miles an hour. I mean. Forty miles an hour in cases. Uh, so I, you know, speed bumps. Everybody hates them, but I kind of like the idea of them now.
Seems like a good prospect. You think of golf carts.
I think golf carts and bicycles need to be addressed, you know, the whole bike, I think the bike community's increased substantially on the island too. I don't, I don't know what the answer is, but I think a lot of the biking gloves and you see, you know, I see packs coming through our neighborhood almost daily where there. Ten people, five people, and you're just, you know, they're riding over here on their exercise runs. But the frequency and the volume has uh come up quite a bit, and I think that does impact traffic because they're running, they're running with the traffic.
And and you're suggesting there may be people from mainland.
Oh, often, yeah, these, these are, a lot of these folks are coming off from off the island and they're, you know, it's a nice enjoyable, I'm not sure, this just becomes part of their route on their twenty mile, thirty mile route or whatever.
Would would you all agree that I get the sense that golf carts are kind of seen as a resident? Amenity and that any improvement to golf cart kind of flow and access. Is an improvement that really is targeted to the residents? Would you all kind of generally?
What about the rentals, Sandy? I think most of the rentals are all golf cart.
I'm, yeah, I don't see the same volume in the rentals as I see as the residents moving around with uh. Certainly, there are, there are people that rent golf carts when they get here. Um, and I think that you'll probably have an increase in that going forward. And I think that you'll probably have an increase in that going forward as more, more rental capacity is expanded. I think that's what slowed it down, but, uh. We, do, do every one of our properties have a golf cart? No. Do I think they will? I don't think it's gonna happen anytime real soon.
That whole grand vision, that whole grand vision for Palm Bowl.
There are some that are doing that, and they ride around for a day or two, get a ticket and they park it.
Because you're not supposed to be on Palm Boulevard with them.
Unless it's a, um, low speed vehicle.
You know, there's been that, there's been that grand vision for Palm Boulevard that the old one, I think you all put that together, that had, did that have golf cart, uh, and bike lanes in it? I don't, I don't know the answer to that. Yeah, but that's something, you know, I, I know that's starting to get talked about again, I think with the, even with the DOT in the state, but that's something.
But generally, generally the golf carts and bicycle would be viewed as easier for residents to get around, particularly when it's just to get your.
So that, you know, and I guess I'm thinking of David's point of getting through that intersection. There has been. You know, kind of a focus on getting golf cart access down the side of Palm. And then it's, it's a weird thing that it's kind of going, the plan is to, on the other side from the one that's there now, there's a, a part, a path there. But getting it into the shopping center, right now, there's a path and then takes you out. Dumps you out into oncoming traffic, so. There's an effort to kind of clean that up, but maybe that gets you through the, through the intersection.
Or even through this area.
Right, get you to this area.
Because I, I almost had to drive my golf cart here because ours is in the shop. And I would have generally parked at Harris Teeter and walked the rest of the way because I haven't figured my way around all this mess.
Right.
And I've talked to people who have, but, um, you know, if it was something.
A secret map?
I don't know where they cross over and then go through that parking lot there. And some of them aren't legal. Well, illegal golf cart crossing, you know, there's, I, I, we did a retaining structure between twentieth and, and the supermarket. For golf carts and it's been a godsend. You know, it's a, a safer way to get there because people are finding ways to get there.
There is one safety consideration though with this whole piece. The more we encourage golf cart traffic. And, and this is, this is enforcement, so it's, it's more for the police, not you guys. But I swear if I see another twelve year old driving a golf cart by themselves, I'm gonna put him under citizen's arrest. So it's just something we gotta think about. The more routes that we carve out, um, we're gonna, we're gonna have to manage it effectively.
They probably don't have their permit either.
Alright, one last topic I want to discuss, like you want to expand, uh, that I want to bring up, uh, parking. It seems like there've been, move this way, move this way, and DOT comes in. It seems like it's a agreed upon, we got what we got, and it seems to work reasonably well. Is that a true statement?
That's a good question. Look, they're all scratching their head. They can't answer.
I would, I would say yes. I think that that fifteen plan, if we can stick to that fifteen plan, that's, that's an agreed upon, something that the island community seems to be pretty happy with.
So at least you had done a, uh, study many years ago for what the number of spaces were all the way down to fifty seven, maybe fifteen years ago?
Yep, well, yeah.
And that has changed somewhat, as you pointed out, from, from locking out the, um. Residential areas, basically, everything. On the other side of, what, Cameron? Or is it inclusive of Cameron, the residential?
No, it's, it's just Palm.
Yeah, Palm, Palm Boulevard has four ninety one.
Four hundred ninety one? So, and does that include all the way down to fifty seven?
Yep.
So there's no more, no, no more parking on twenty third?
That excludes the, the recent addition.
Correct. Yeah, we did have, and I, Noel Scott would go every weekend and manually count all of the cars. And but, and back then, I mean, it was triple parked, parallel parked. We could pull those numbers out to see what.
I still have that on my computer.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I, I still have all that from, what was that, two thousand?
But I don't think any of us are talking about reopening the twenty fifteen parking plan, right?
I, I would, would not encourage that.
We're silent on that one.
So I would just say that, you know, the, and, and Scott, to your point, um, about. Knowing when spaces are available, part of kind of the long range plan was to charge to park. And build into the charging mechanism, the ability to kind of say, hey, we just know that around this meter that's there is very lightly used. Somehow kind of correlate the pay to park with available spaces.
Well, if you do, if you do a true pay to park with plate readers, people are paying in advance and use plate readers, you'd know where all the cars are, which could be easily transmitted to an app. So I mean, there are things that could happen.
Yeah, that was kind of part of that, um, part of that plan was to get.
And even if they're not paying, you could still do the technology. Yeah. But I, I mean, I think, I think the pay, pay to park on Palm Boulevard is probably at this point, pretty much a non-starter.
Yeah, well, I, I think that we feel like the timing would be bad to approach the subject now, but prior, I mean, previously it wasn't in the, you know, it was generally seen.
It was being considered or talked about.
So I think, yeah, I think maybe a future consideration would be to.
I can see where you can turn that a little bit to, to, um, be to the advantage of those coming over here to visit. In terms of the app that you're speaking of and knowing where parking was available and not available.
Well, if you, or if you wanted to spread parking, you take the, if it's four hundred spot, spots, you make four hundred spots free at the front beach to move people to front beach and you move the paid parking on Palm. You can get all creative on where the paid spots are.
One other thought or, or comment is, um, I've been reminded that the Beach Reach app is, there is a, an effort to tie capacity at the paid lots. Remaining capacity into that app. So that's something that's being worked on that, you know, it's, we, we still think it's thirty percent open, so. Come now, not, or we know it's already over capacity, you've lost your chance. So hopefully, you know, some technology will be.
Yeah, and I just want to clarify my comment from earlier. I'm not saying that there couldn't be some value in an app. There's something to be, there's something to value there, but. I'm just saying that I hate for everybody to put, hang their hat on that without some other more tangible solutions. So, and maybe it's part of it, but I don't think it's the prize winner.
Even a heat, you know, just a heat map con- concept of where, like if somebody said you got the, you got the green area of the island, you got the red area now, you know. Anything I think that can help direct traffic, because right now there, anybody comes over here looking for a parking spot, they're blind. They don't know where they are. I mean, we, I think we can improve on that.
Yeah, and while on that, on that point, Scott, to your, your comments about improving on the lesson learned on the physical failure of public transportation.
Stop, Sandy.
It was a nice ride. Bus was, it was a very nice bus.
You could spread out.
People driving everywhere were fantastic. It was, it was a wonderful experience.
If there were a way to appease some folks, um, and attract more. To your point where they can bring their bicycle, their chairs, their umbrellas, you know, whatever it is, their coolers, uh, because the kids need to hydrate while they're on the beach. Not anything else.
You know, they won't be checking coolers as they're getting on the shuttle, I don't think.
No, but when you get to the beach, they do. Yeah, I'm not opposed to public transportation. It's just I, I, uh. It needs, it needs work, to your point.
And, yeah, I, I had some, we lived in this, in the ski resort for a while and it was unbelievable. It's, it's adopted, it's, uh, very successful. They accommodate the equipment, um, the, the, um, buses are packed and, but the frequency and the equipment are, are very, very frequent. And they're, they're going to places where they've got facilities and things of that nature and they're spreading it out. Yeah, the waiting, I wouldn't want to wait an hour at the beach. Maybe that'd be an hour and a half.
This is the equivalent of that ski ride without you being able to put your skis on.
Exactly.
You know, so that's, you know, it's not gonna be as much fun.
That, that should be fixed this season. Resort, that's not a good thing.
Exactly.
Sorry, what was that?
That should, the lack of equipment, we hope that'll be fixed this season. So hopefully incremental improvements, it'll, it'll gain in ridership and become better. So Sandy won't call it. The bad words.
Well, this would've been very helpful for us. Uh, I think you've been very generous with your time. And, uh, I guess what I'd like to do is open up one last time, anything else that we did not talk about, I expected to hear this. Um, I'd be happy to hear from you. How about that? Before we come back next time.
Traffic, parking, flow. Four lanes on the connector to leave, don't want more coming on. No, that pretty much sums it up.
Less traffic in front of Marty's house.
Please. Thanks for being here, Rick. We appreciate it.
Oh, no, no, it's, uh, it's great. Keep in mind now, it'd be, it'd be great if we could solve everything. It's not gonna come back with a hundred percent solution. Oh my gosh, this is, we didn't realize this. But what we're gonna do is try to package some things that make sense to work toward or where they may want to go. And then we'll come back and talk about it, right?
Very good.
And you say you're all wet, or I like this, I don't like this, or go back and rethink this, that'd be fine.
Final, um, question, I guess. Our normal meeting would be two weeks from today. I'm guessing that's not enough for them to, enough time for them.
I would like a little more time.
Are, are you?
To solve the world's problems?
Would the April, and I'm not sure the date. Second Wednesday of?
I've got a problem with thirteen. I've, I've found that out.
Okay.
So I would like to. Is week four or week after or something? It has to be thirteen, obviously.
Alright, that's good to know, so we can, we'll, yeah, we'll move our day, but.
Is it the whole week or just that?
Just that one day. Well, Tuesday, I've got a, I've got a conference out of town Tuesday and Wednesday. And if, St. Paul, yes, so it's gotta be thirteen. I'll just step short and come back here. But that's.
It's gonna get caught by the bridge.
That's why I was like, maybe I got caught by the Wando Bridge.
Hey, Rick, I know you, you guys work with the state a lot, correct? So I would assume you're gonna be doing this anyway as you cycle through some of these alternatives, but I would appreciate when, when we meet again to know your opinion on how they'll be receptive to those plans that would. Would impact or would require the state's involvement.
We will give your honest opinion. Just because of working for you, we will not vet anything at state. Until we vet them with you first, and then we can, if you so directly could go to state and say, hey, what about, but we will give you our, this will be a slam dunk, this will be a.
Right.
Hard sell. This could be great, but ain't no way.
That's all I'm getting at, yep.
Our opinion.
Yep.
So you can't do the thirteenth, you said? So we're, we're talking about moving that.
Well. I think we'll have a, we'll have a meeting on the, on the ninth, I think, so we can decide if to, well.
If you want to do thirteen, I'll do thirteen. If you want to do thirteen, I'll do thirteen. But you can decide whether you want to.
So we are very close. I mean, we only have two weeks between this meeting and our next meeting. We could move that meeting, which would normally be March ninth. We could move it back to say. You know, the week, four weeks, would that be enough, Rick? So that'd be kind of the twenty third-ish?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Instead of meeting two weeks from now.
Twenty third of March.
Actually, I got a conflict on the ninth anyways. That's, that's better for me too.
The twenty third?
Yeah.
Throw something at her. She's deep in thought.
Uh, yes.
No court?
I was saying, I probably can't make it on the twenty third, but you can't, I'll have to check to see if I can rearrange, but.
I don't see it on the, I don't show up on my phone, so.
I'll go back and watch a video.
March twenty third.
You have March, you have March thirtieth, so.
Are you just that day?
That week.
That whole week?
Any remote in?
March thirty. You do have court. That's like, okay. March twenty ninth, Tuesday?
Works for me.
Four thirty? Alright, let's tentatively say March twenty ninth, Tuesday. And Rick, just if that doesn't give you enough time.
Will we meet on?
So I'd say we don't meet on the ninth. That would be our regular, we could, I guess we could see where the, uh.
I was reasoning, I was asking, is the attorney?
Yeah, where's the attorney?
When do we have?
You want to just, maybe that would be a good time.
Cause I'm, I'm open then. I had another meeting.
Okay. So we would do our legal briefing on the night, still.
But Amy's getting court that thing.
And two. It's two. You're at two. It's four thirty? Four thirty's okay? Alright, so that's our standard meeting. We'll still do that. We'll do the, the legal briefing on the night. Alright, I think we're, we're good, right? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks again, Rick.
Thank you, Rick.
Okay, we, we will try to be that up.
Okay.
From today's meeting, uh, primary of the comments, but we will send them to you and if you could, just make sure we captured the.
I will.
Correctly, so we don't, that we felt we heard one thing.
Yep.
Before we come back.
Thank you all. Do we, is, um. Or talk about short term rental analysis? Do we, do you guys want, would it be helpful to have that screen back up?
I think the, I think we were talking about maybe starting with the maps, uh, not Steve's map, but the reference map.
Put up on the screen.
The one I sent you, this is the new one.
That would be good to have up there.
Yeah, yes. I can't even remember the numbers anymore, so, yeah. They want us to call it Steve's. Maybe for today, we just, what do you think, just to kind of orient the material and then we can dive into another meeting or something?
Yeah.
That sounds good. A moment.
Scott?
Scott, kick us off where we stand with the actual, the whole project. Well, he's where, where the programmers stand, they've made a lot of progress, and I'll kinda give up on this. Dave, Dave just.
Sounds good. I think just from a, I call, I guess you call it the database situation, what we've done is if you look at the map that was prepared, the reference map, uh, there are now, there were nine initial areas, and this was just a first cut. These areas and these boundaries can be moved any way we'd like. But what we did is we went into the roughly five thousand, or you know, forty-eight hundred property records, and we assigned a, the area to the property record. So now, when this gets all loaded back into the application, we can sort however we want by these areas. So you can go from the entire island down now to the areas. So all of that, um, I guess you call it data cleansing and assignment has been done. And we have the capability to look at, um, uh, any primary residents, second home, short-term rental, long-term rental or other, uh, by area, by rooms and by units. And we've got percentage penetration by all of that, so people are gonna be able to look at, you know, kind of almost down to the neighborhood level, what is the penetration within your, your area? The, uh, the team's kinda gone through it, I think the data's pretty, pretty clean now, you know, we've still got a little bit, it, it's just an iterative process. But we've generated some, you know, at least a first cut, we've, we've done three views, we've done by area, wild dunes, non-wild dunes, and then the third is commercial and residential, it's all the same data just by those different views. And I think we gotta say that the commercial residential still is kinda going through some, um, uh, you know, taking a look and figuring out exactly where those boundaries go. But I don't know, we wanna stop there, Steve, anything that, Dave, anything to add?
I think that's a good summary. Okay. Um, let me just update this a little bit, since the last, we first talked about this back in August or September, we had a very conceptual map up there, and I played around with a little, to get a little more depth to it. So the programmers could actually do something that they weren't really data points, they could sort by very well. So as Scott just said, what I did is I took what essentially is we're calling this reference map, and I actually went, and I sent this to all you guys, all you folks. I went street by street for the whole island and kinda said, let's put these streets into these areas. So, cause the database still works best by street address at this point, so to try to sort it other ways is, is not as intuitive, and it's a little confusing to sort by tins and other things, so. I still think street addresses make the most sense, so really we have this kinda legend which says, here's where, where each street falls here. Now, I don't want people to read into this that there's some underlying meaning to these areas, all I, these are just a way to start sorting the data. Yes, there was some thought here, is there a difference between Forest Trail and Ocean Boulevard and, and the condos in, in Wild Dunes? Yes, that's, that's about the, all the thought that was put into it, let's just bucket these things in some fairly high levels, and say, let's look at each of those areas and see what the data starts to show. And as we start to look at that data, we may say, well, what's happening in those areas isn't similar, maybe these lines aren't the right lines, maybe they need to be tweaked, maybe we need to move streets in different places to look at the areas. And I think some of those may already starting to be happening. But I don't want anyone reading too much into this or think that there's some kind of thought or rule or ordinance or zoning that's gonna happen here, that has nothing to do with this. This is just, look, how do we sort the data into nine different buckets? And there might be some similarities between the areas or differences.
And I, and I think this did help point out that if you look at some of the, you know, like if you look at Area Two and Area Seven, those are the high commercial, uh, areas, or I guess some, where the hotels are.
Yeah, front beach and, and the resort areas are, tend to be, are different than much of the residential area, that's about the level of thought.
So, you know, on a, on a bedroom basis, on these areas, just for, um, example, and again, this preliminary data, we've seen anywhere from about a, you know, fourteen percent penetration for short-term rentals in some of the neighborhoods like the Forest Trail, to as high as seventy percent penetration of the, or represented penetration in those front areas. So this is allowing us to be able to kinda separate the high density from the lower density areas.
You know, actually, David's probably done more of the, the digging into it, he gets these, uh, fits a range at night, he stays up all night digging into the data more so than I do, so I thank him for that. And he sent out this one table that all of you should have received, he did some pivot tables, which again, isn't the final answer, but starts to show what we're gonna be able to do, and starts to answer some of the questions about what Scott just said, what's the, what's the percentage penetration in some of these areas? And it does vary widely from, like you said, fifteen percent to sixty or seventy percent short-term rentals. So David, maybe you can explain a little more what you did on your table.
Yeah, so Scott has someone also working on it, and I decided to kinda do it independently so that, kind of a validation, if we come up with similar answers, then we, we have a little bit more trust in them. And that's kinda where I, I just kept going, um, on what I was looking at, and I was primarily using short-term rentals since we had that data. I didn't break out second homes and the stuff I was working on. But I, we could get there. But looking at these areas, we, we finally did get a pretty good consistent number of percentage of short-term rentals in each one of the areas, and we're, we're fairly close to agreement in them. Um, and then I started going back, taking just small pockets, just kinda eyeballing, looking for pockets that stood out within those areas. And did, didn't find a whole lot that didn't expect, uh, what Stephen said, Area Two and Seven, Seven are very similar to each other in the percentages. Uh, one, four and six are very similar. Little bit more differences in three, five and nine, but again, there, there were, there were the lower percentages. What I did out of the map, what I did just discover is those little red pockets of condos in Section Nine are actually closer to probably a twenty percent of them, fifteen to twenty percent of those, each one of those areas is a, has, are, are short-term rentals.
The ones off, the, the ones off the beach are.
Off the beach, looked more like Area Nine, so my only comment would be roll them into Area Nine. And the little red area by seven, looks like the rest of seven more so than it does eight, so roll it in. Everywhere else, I was actually kinda surprised when I started trying to break up Area Six, it was pretty consistent all across the area, and actually, the area more off the beach, it actually has a hot, slightly higher percentage rental than the area on the beach. It's like twenty-one and twenty-five percent, so it's not a big, big jump. The only other area that I found any kinda inconsistency was in one, and again, kind of expected it, if I looked at, from Seventh Avenue to Tenth, it was much higher than from First to Seventh. So we may wanna look at moving that in some regard, but, um, Area Three, Four, Five, and the rest of Nine were all real consistent across, I just could not find any areas that stood out being abnormal to the rest.
And, and the one thing I just wanted to add a little bit, and it was in some of the data we looked at, when, when this thing started a year ago, um, I think there was this thought process that I, I don't wanna over dramatize this, you know, we have to do something, we're getting overrun by rentals, and is this a problem, and what are other people doing? And, and I think the reassuring thing about starting to look at the data and starting to getting this is, is yes, we may wanna look at these areas and what's happening in some areas. But overall, the, you know, from, from twenty-fourteen to twenty-twenty-one, the actual number of rental licenses went down on the island. So it's not like we see, we're seeing this dramatic increase across the island, and, and all of a sudden we have hundreds of more rental licenses than we did ten years ago or five years ago. Now, they may be changing where they are, and that's what this will start to tell us, is are they moving from the condos to the more residential areas or, or other places? But that's different than I think even what the first message was, so to speak, even from council to look at, are we having too many licenses? Should we cap licenses, are we getting overrun by licenses? That doesn't seem to be what's happening.
Yeah, but I, and I, I think that's true, but I think we, the licenses are not necessarily all the drivers, because of they're either active or inactive, and a room, a license might've been a two-bedroom, and now it's a six-bedroom. So that's where I think the bedroom counts are coming into play, I think also we gotta, you know, really take a look at, I, I agree with Stephen, the licenses may have come down. But, you know, if it's, if bedrooms and occupancy are going up, on a, on a per-licensed basis, then, and, and not to mention, this, these, this, this numbers don't include the two-hundred-and-forty-six hotel rooms, which are then drivers for hospitality and traffic and everything else. I, I think it's, that's one, that's one data point, we gotta look at, and I think we're doing this, we're looking at all the data points.
David, didn't, did you indicate that you did look at kind of migration from condos to houses, and there was, there was some correlation there?
There was, there was a little bit, I was kinda surprised at a couple of things, uh, like just looking at C cabins, uh, in themselves, from twenty-fourteen to twenty-twenty, they've actually have fewer short-term rentals than, um, they did in twenty-fourteen. I did, again, kinda didn't expect that, and then it was like, well, if there's less of those, what were they replaced with? That gets back to, we're seeing, we're not seeing a change in the overall total as much as just some mikes. And it's very small migration, so it's hard to tell. Again, is it a trend? It's hard to go back to some of the data of how, you know, how accurate it was, but.
Does that bear out to you, Sandy, that C cabins would be less?
More and more owners have taken their unit off of the market for rental, and are using them as true second homes for themselves and their family members, and they're, they're, I've seen, believe it or not, an increasing residence in C cabins.
Full-time resident?
Yes, yeah, I know several people that downsized here in our community, sold their homes for gazillions and bought a C cabin.
Retiring here?
So, and, and even if you look at the, the, the beachfront condos in Wild Dunes, it, it actually went down, it was three-hundred-and-seventy, and now there's three-hundred-and-twenty, and I wouldn't have guessed that, to be honest, but I think, so there are trends that are interesting to see. That, that's fifty is not a small number to go down. A lot of the one or two here and there, but fifty is a big number to.
Forte Call has nearly a dozen full-time residents living down there, that one-bedroom condos.
But I think that's, hit to Scott's point, I think we never had the ability to, to get below that next level and start looking at, at, at bedrooms. Now, occupancy is another whole problem, you're talking how many people are on the island moving in time, whether they're rented or not, you know, that's gonna be, that, this database won't tell us that, but it, but it will tell us bedrooms, it'll tell us, um, you know, where, where the stuff is moving within these areas.
So maybe I didn't see it, but does, does this chart get us to that density component at all yet, or that's something we're still working on?
No, that's actually, we, uh, this one chart, now if you wanna, if you wanna put it up, but that does show, um.
This guy?
Yeah, yeah, that one. And I think we need to caveat, I mean, these are preliminary numbers, I think they're directionally, I think we'd agree they're probably directionally correct, but we, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna keep scrubbing the, the information. That's a good, that's a good chart right there.
That's, that's the one.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, I mean, you can even, you can enlarge it a little bit if you want. And then bring it down. A little left to the right now. Yeah, that'll, that'll work, why, why don't we focus on that right there? Maybe a little bit down lower, just a little bit lower. Lower, lower. You're going the other way. There you go, yeah, right there, that's perfect.
The ocean is that high?
Do you have this one, this has a summary of that one?
No, I didn't.
David said this one.
It turned off, oh, there you go. No, that's, that's fine, that'll work, yeah, that worked. Yeah. Okay, so just that's, the way to read this is, um, that first, those first two blocks up above, we split it into three categories, you have those two blocks there. So you've got, um, by area, you've got primary residents, if you're going left to right. Area, primary, number of primary residents, these are by bedrooms, so number of bedrooms in the area, and then percentage of the area. So I'll, let's just take Area One as an example. So Area One has two-hundred-and-ninety-six primary residences, it's thirty percent of the area. Next is the short, there are, there are second homes.
Thirty percent of the area is primary residence.
On, on bedrooms, correct.
Thirty percent of the bedrooms.
Thirty percent of the bedrooms are primary residents, yeah. And then next, you've got the, uh, second homes. So you've got a hundred-and-eighty-five bedrooms, nineteen percent are second home. And then short-term rental, you've got four-hundred-and-sixty-seven rooms, and that's forty-eight percent, that's an Area One. And then we, you know, we've got the long-term and other, those, that's just to make sure it all adds up. So we've got a total of nine-hundred-and-sixty-nine, um, rooms in Area One. So, and then below, yeah, and you can just kinda keep reading that across, the totals at the bottom, just to give you the totals. So you've got, um, in, uh, right now, we're looking at the bedrooms, we've got about forty-five-hundred bedrooms, and, um, yeah, out of the total fifteen thousand. Those are, those are the bedrooms, yeah. Of short-term, short-term rental bedrooms. Yeah. And then we did it by wild dunes, non-wild dunes, but you know, this is something I think we gotta, we may have to go down a little bit area by area on this. I think this just came out yesterday, maybe, yeah, let's, I don't know, we wanna digest it here, but just, you know, I think this is something that we can take a look at, and I think what it's really gonna say, to David's point, is that the front, and Steve's, the front beach areas are gonna be, as expected, higher penetration, and you start getting into the, off the front beach, and those, those penetrations are coming down. I think one of the, one of the interesting ones that, if you go to the middle of it, you've got, uh, you've got more licenses in Wild Dunes, which I think would be expected, but less bedrooms. So you've got more units, less bedrooms, you've got more bedrooms and less units outside the gate, because you've got the bigger, you've got the bigger rental properties. So I think then the question, I don't know, like to Marty and to others who live in some of these areas, you know, what's the, what are, what are the livability impacts? And I think we talked about, you know, if we were to benchmark this against, say, the, what, you know, what Kiowa did in their residential areas, we've got, um, I think they, what do they cap it at, twenty?
Twenty.
Twenty in the, in the residential.
Not in the whole island, it was.
Yeah, just in the residential.
Right, it was mainly the residential, the R ones, and even they excluded a couple of streets in the R one, which I'm assuming had higher densities.
Yeah, so if I, you know, if Ilo Palms were to benchmark against the Kiowa, we've got, uh, you know, Area Five is below the twenty, that's in the fourteen percent, uh, realm, which is a highly residential area, you've got Area Three, which is at twenty-three percent, so you know, we're, we're roughing around. Now, some of the, some of the areas would maybe be over that in either bedrooms or units. But some of the island, I think, you know, as, I think Sandy was talking, you've got more residents coming into some of these areas, you know, the Forest Trail and some of those areas are gonna be round, roughing around fourteen, fifteen percent penetration. And then you've got front beach that's, you know, up to seventy. But yeah, this, this'll take a little bit of digesting, I think. But it sits here, the data's here.
Yeah, I'm a little surprised at, um, the difference between Area One, which is Ocean Boulevard, and Palm Boulevard. Palm used to be, when you did a everything less than and greater than a two-nine-four-five-one zip code, that was a search criteria I had availability to fifteen years ago through MLS. It was about seventy-five percent of the properties were, were non-residents, and I'm, I'm classifying two-nine-four-five-one as a residence.
You come out on Palm Boulevard, Sandy?
Yeah.
Yeah, and this is showing four, this is showing about forty-three percent on the bedrooms, yeah.
It's down to thirty-nine percent of the.
Of the units, yeah.
Family vacations, yeah.
Yeah, and fan, ocean, ocean's showing higher than that at, uh, forty-two.
Yeah.
I would've thought that was the other way around.
That's, that's one of the ones I saw that surprised me, even over the years, that it tended to, the numbers on Palm and Ocean's were actually going down, they're becoming more residential.
Yes.
It does say, I mean, just from looking at the building permits, and, you know, I see these houses, and you can just, I can tell that they're not a rental house. On these, you know, super expensive.
Conversions.
I don't know who they are, but they're, I guess they don't need the money to rent their house.
But that kinda goes back, is that, they're not, there's another rental house coming up somewhere else to replace it.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm, I was saying, are you seeing the rentals kinda pushing off front beach and going into the center of the island more, or?
No, not at all. Not at all. I believe that's a relatively stagnant situation. And I'm, and I'm, when you say into the center of the aisle, and I'm really thinking, uh, twenty-first to forty-first, twenty of the forty-first.
Area Five.
We call Area Five.
Cam, Cam is the waterway, yeah, exactly. I do not see a, a lot of pressure in that area. And the ones we do see in there are, um, they're short-lived, they're less than two or three years, and they, and they either move in or stop renting. Most of them move in. So it's kind of a stopgap, as we've talked about before, where they're, you know, I need to pay some, some. So it's kind of a stopgap, as we've talked about before, where they're, you know, I need to pay some, some taxes and insurance and if. I can get some rental income and offset my expenses, even though I can move in, that's, that's what I'm.
If you do look at the highest level between two thousand fourteen and twenty one. What we're, what we're, I've labeled as area five, the number of licenses has increased from ninety three to hundred and thirty three. That's the biggest increase anywhere.
In area five.
In area five.
Area five has gone up.
Five forty. Which is, I think, again, maybe not an astronomical number, but a percentage, I mean, but that's, that's one of the biggest numbers increased in any areas.
I feel like that's the one I hear about, you know, that it, it, I never had a rental.
Because in some ways, without being too subjective, that's, that always has been kind of one of our neighborhood areas too. I mean, that's a lot of full time residents, all the people there raising kids around the rec center and those kind of places. So, so rental income, rentals intruding on that would be the most, be felt the most, I think.
Well, other, other than wild. Other than wild dunes, at eleven hundred and seventy seven total units, it is one thousand and seventy five total units. Uh, but proportionately, percentage wise, it's not uh. It's not overtly out there.
But in the same period of time, while we went from two hundred and twenty six licenses to two hundred and twenty eight, increased by two, whereas. Forest Trail, that middle part of the island, improving, increased by forty.
Is this data still a snapshot in time?
Yes. And this, this area, are you talking about the one sheet here? This here, this is, yeah, that is, that's a snapshot in time. We, we, we could update it.
August twenty twenty one licenses, I think. Last, last year's license.
And what about the county?
But at what point in time?
Complete, um, so they, you know, a license trickles in and uh throughout the year. So this was the end of the year, uh.
This is December?
No, June.
So, I mean, the only point I'm making, there were a lot of transactions that have occurred over the last even six months. I mean, to Sandy's point, there have been some folks that rented for a short time, moved in, second home, whatever, follow on, but I've seen it go. The other way around too, but the point is there have been, there's been a lot of movement with low interest rates. People have been capitalizing on the market and so I'm not gonna make a conclusion on which way it's going, because I've, like I said, I've seen both ways, so. Just be interesting to get a.
Well, one, one thing would be helpful, and I don't know, Douglas, you said, last time we were talking about refreshing the data, you said you were still receiving the up, the current year.
Yeah, well, and we have this, we have this anomaly in the middle of this renewal that we did a six month license.
Everybody did one or?
Yes, we had it, we had, we had a, we had to.
Dictated by the state.
Yeah, the State Business License Standardization Act.
Also, the cutoffs are lined up now.
Yes, so we, we had to juggle our cutoff date. So we have this short year of licensing. Which, um, like, you know, we'll have, we have the data, but I, I would hate, I kind of don't know that it should be. Six months would be inaccurate.
But did everybody that had a license have to re?
Anybody who rented in that six months, but it was, it was only a six month period.
So if anything, it should. Suggestion would be is if you, if you've got that, we can at least look at it and compare it and we could have a, you know, we could at least have an updated view and, and a. And at least a recent trend line, even with that. I mean, if the data doesn't work out, then so be it, but if we can get.
Yeah.
You know, if you, if you can send that to us, we can probably work on that.
Yeah, I just wouldn't want it to be relied on as a. You know, a, a benchmark that you could compare against the other years, because I, I don't think that would be fair.
What was that cutoff date? So from June of twenty one till when did you acquire six months of license?
Uh, you're gonna, this is like a Rubik's Cube on live TV, Sandy.
Would you like to refer to the March nine?
Let me write a note.
Yeah, I'll, I will let you know. You should know, you know that, you're just quizzing me. Well. I know now that they. Expire May one. I should probably be able to figure it back out, but it, it was a complicated thing. We actually had to redo the ordinance twice.
No, I know, we, we're very confused.
Yeah, it's confusing. But I can just tell you, it's. A shorter time.
The other answer, the only thing we have sequential data on by years really is the license stuff. The other stuff is a one time shot in the county, it's a number of bedrooms, those kind of things, but Douglas's annual license.
Right.
We can, we can stack those year by year, like, like David did here, the number of bedrooms and other stuff is always gonna be one pitch point.
And if we want to refresh, you know, if we want to say, hey, we want to refresh the county data, take a poll every year or however frequent you want. And what the, with these applications, they'll just deal with the delta, the difference in the data, you won't have to go through and do it all over again. So once, you know, once this foundation's here, we should just be able to deal with changes.
So David, you mentioned, so to me, when I looked at the map, I was kind of thinking that section six. Above kind of Palm was more like section five, but I think you're saying you did that analysis and you found out.
I did that, I actually said to Scott saying, I thought that, and then when I dug into it, I actually saw the, it was the opposite of what I was thinking.
More like um the rest of that section than section.
Yeah.
What about, did you look at um? The other one that kind of jumped out at me is I feel like Cameron. Properties on Cameron are kind of more like the second row of Palm.
That's one of the ones on my list I want to do is try to, to look if, you know, I split.
Down the back of Cameron is kind of what I was thinking.
I did that on Ocean. Um, and that's again, that's where I actually found out that it's actually more rentals on the inland side of Ocean percentage ones than on the front side. But not enough to, to say we should split it off into section three because. It still is a much higher count than once you get past that first row or second row.
And I think now that we have the basis built, it's fairly easy.
Easy to do, just add Cameron.
You, you can move Cameron out of five into.
Put it into four.
Four and just say, I want the even numbers, the odd numbers on Cameron. It's like everything was by street, so you can do one side of the street or the other. So.
I would say, I would guess that all of Cameron would be more like four than it is like five, but I could be wrong.
Well, and, and always, even without the area designation, you can go in and do a street search on any street. I can go into my street and say, okay. Edge water, what are the number of parcels, what are the number of licenses? So you can do it, always do a street by street search. It doesn't have to be an area search.
Very interesting.
So to do, to, to split Cameron in half, can you do odds and evens?
Yes.
So the even numbers are on the ocean side of Cameron, the odd numbers are on.
I don't know which one's.
Yeah, I used to live there.
Yeah, yes, you could, it's just a little bit more difficult.
To split them, yeah.
Like on some of the streets I did, you know, from, from zero to eleven hundred and then eleven hundred to fifty seven hundred. So you can split by addresses, but it just takes an extra step of. The data guys having to enter it that way.
Yeah, for example, um, was it Charleston Boulevard? The odd numbers are part of one and the even are. There was one that, yeah, uh.
And I'm not sure it was even intentional, but some did get split that way.
Right, that those houses that you think are on Ocean are actually. Uh, Carolina or Charleston address.
They might be locked, they might be streets and street lots.
They are.
My gut tells me Cameron's way more residential.
So you think it's more like five, so that would leave it.
I do.
Well, parts, parts.
I, I'm not saying there's a, a patch or two here and there, but by and large, I think it's.
Mainly residential.
Residential for me, if I'm walking down Cameron.
Yeah. All right, well, maybe that's.
I live on Cameron, you would have thought I would actually look at my neighborhood, but I didn't.
Scott, you're actually two or three, right?
Well, actually.
Uh, no, I'm, I'm in, I'm in one, I'm on uh Ninth Avenue. Ninth is the edge of one. Yeah, I'm in, I'm in that area that Dave's thinking maybe we lob in with two, but it's resident, it's pretty much residential, maybe a tenth.
We cover pretty well.
Well, where we were meeting is on one, yeah. Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, you're right, you're right. Yep, you're right. I should know where you live.
It's Scott, isn't Scott in three? Tell Scott he's.
I'm, you're, you're right, I'm in three.
You are in three.
I am in three.
Thought you were.
I've always had trouble with math.
You didn't start one.
Uh, but I'm, I'm up on uh, I'm close on Caroline.
But you're two, you're two, not, you're two ninth.
I think I'm in three. I think I might be in three.
Even though I don't own the map, I do remember the line, the line was at eleven.
But how far back?
All the way out.
He's, he's on uh.
He's on, he's on, well, he was one of those that popped as anomaly, because that's, that, that wasn't one of the normal streets to have a house on was nine. Most of the streets this way don't have addresses on. So we had to go back and say, so the data came back saying, where's, where's four ninth? It's like, oh, because it didn't show up as a normal street.
So I would say if uh, does anybody have? Any specifics that they want to ask that the group analyze? I think I would, I would be curious to know if Cameron was more like four than five. I think Marty, if it's, and I guess I would say put it in the group that's more, the closer to it. Sounds like it may be closer to five, so leave it there.
Yeah.
I think you answered, I had a question about splitting six, but I think you've answered the question. About that, you're, you're going to, as I understand it, the. Uh, disconnected red parts of eight are gonna go away and become.
I think some of the back, the, the condos in town has, they're in the back part of Wild Dunes, I think more fall into nine than they do the ocean front condos. I think, I think David's right there. I think moving those in just makes it easier anyway.
And you wanted, you wanted to move that other slice of red that's within those seven in two seven.
Just to make it easier.
Agreed.
It's not.
Yeah, Morgan Place and uh Yacht Harbor on the backside.
Correct.
And then the one you, you, you've noted here.
Yeah, and actually there's a group of single family homes in that seventh area that's, there's about ten, but when I look at them, they look more like. The rest of the separate area.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take another markup of this, make it official, I'll send it to Douglas so he can distribute it and you guys can make whatever changes you want. It's, this works pretty well now, this is, so I'll mark the ones that we want to move around and you can distribute it.
Okay, and then we can get the, we'll get the markers reasigned.
I don't have too much work.
No, it's not big deal. Okay, good. Tell me, you tell us what you need to be moving, we'll move it.
Good. Those, those should be easy, because they all.
They're grouped.
They're grouped.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll take that on and mark and make a change.
Tell me, yeah, tell me what needs to move, we'll get it.
All right, we've been here for a long time.
It's good.
It's official.
Oh, I just ordered dinner.
Am I hearing a motion to adjourn?
The only, I just, the only thing for my miscellaneous business was um the next meeting, which I think we've agreed, we'll have. Uh, city attorney, yeah, at the next regular meeting and then uh we shifted that date.
Motion adjourn. Second. Aye.
Sit here by myself, lock up when I.